It is now six oh one, I'd like to go ahead and call this regular meeting of the Gilmore County Board of Education to order for June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Mr. Minnie?
Here.
Dr. Barr?
Here.
Dr. Miller?
Here.
Brian Kennedy? Let the record reflect that Brian Kennedy is not present and myself. Alright. Mr. Payne, would you please, um, lead us in the public.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Hey, this is Brian, I will call in. Okay. Hey, I will put you on speakerphone, okay? Okay. Okay, I'm, okay, we'll put you on speakerphone. Alright. Can you hear me? Okay, alright. You might need to bring that over this way.
Please be encouraged to leave me closer to the microphone.
Yeah. Okay, guys, um. If you will be patient with us, we're going live for the first time this evening, right? Is that accurate? Okay. Brian, are you good?
Not here, Billy.
Okay, good deal. Alright, do we have any delegations this evening? Nope. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. Has everyone gotten the opportunity to review the minutes from the special meeting for May twenty-third as well as the regular meeting for May twenty-third? Yes.
Second.
Alright, there's been a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Clay? You're up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How's everybody?
It's Monday.
You good? Monday?
It's Monday.
Uh, what I have for you tonight, and I'm gonna go ahead, number three, I forgot to send those to you, they are not in your packet, I was to email them to you and I forgot.
Shame, shame.
They will be forthcoming, uh, I will have more, uh, by the last meeting in June as well as we end up and round out the year.
When will those have to be approved?
They have to be approved by June thirtieth.
Okay.
Yeah, after June thirtieth, you cannot do any more budget supplements or transfers, so there's gonna be.
They'll be ready for this meeting?
There'll be a pile of them, yes. So, uh, what I do have for you tonight, um, is a scheduled checks to be written. Were there any questions that anybody had, um, with those?
No.
I didn't.
I didn't see it. Make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve those. You want that approved?
I'll second.
We can do it individually or we can do it all together, it doesn't matter.
Well, we'll just, I mean, you guys wanna wait and do it all together or? We've already got a motion and a second.
Okay.
So, any discussion on the scheduled checks to be written? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion carries.
The, the next item, number two, under treasures report, the monthly financial statement, and that is for April, uh, you will have May shortly, um, soon as we get that, uh, bank reconciliation done, we can close the month. Were there any questions with the April financial statement?
Make a motion to approve the April statement.
Second. There's been a motion and a second, any discussion about the monthly financial report? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The next item that I have for you, um, is purchases over five thousand, uh, I believe Mr. Price was here, um, at the last meeting and spoke about the cover for the floor. Um, he does have three quotes, three bids, um, and his recommendation is this cover master flooring cover, that system, that cover reel, all that good stuff, uh, for the flooring at the elementary school. The second purchase, uh, is for, I believe it's the switch to operate the new, um, secure entry that is going in at the high school.
It's for twenty-three drops.
Twenty-three drops?
Twenty-three drops that will be placed into the new, um, office at the high school that we had replaced and we're gonna have the secretaries and the, and the, um, cameras and everything, so it's twenty-three additional drops.
Okay.
Okay.
Did you get any further information on that?
No, other than what we were looking at is on stock, it'll be over ninety days, so this one is gonna be a little more expensive, but in order to be up and running by the time the school starts, we're gonna have to go with a little more expensive drops in order to have our office back online.
I think it, I think, uh, from an earlier email that I had with Judy today was, I think it went, the price went from about four thousand to six thousand, which is why it's necessary to have it on here.
Well, they definitely have to have it before school starts.
Yes. Are there any questions with those purchases over five thousand?
Make a motion to approve purchases over five thousand?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to approve the purchase over five thousand, both A and B. Is there any further discussion about those items? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
One, one last thing, uh, we did receive our final draft of our fiscal year twenty-one audit. I had questioned earlier in the week as to who was on the audit committee, uh, it was my understanding that Mr. Minnie is the only remaining from the previous year, but we had.
Is that the same as the financial committee? Is it all the same?
Yes, it could be.
Well, I don't know. They could ask me about a financial committee and I don't know if that's the same thing.
If you are interested in being on the audit committee, I'm gonna try to set up, I tried to set up a meeting last week, it wasn't, didn't work out for the auditors, I'm gonna try to set up a meeting for next week. Uh, and I will let you know, uh, hopefully we can get together via Teams and it will just be, they will go through the financial statements, feel free to ask questions, uh, but if you are interested, please let me know and I will make sure that you are uh, included in that information, uh, like I said, I'll try to get a Teams meeting set up, cause I don't know that they'll be able to come here, uh, but that will be with Perry and Associates, our, our auditors, so. Any other questions?
No, item three though, since it was on the agenda, um, I think we probably need to make a motion to postpone it till the next meeting.
Okay.
I'll move.
Second.
Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye to postpone the budget supplements and transfers to the next, uh, meeting.
Aye.
Alright.
Thank you.
I have no, uh, technical difficulties, that's sorry, we're still working on the technical part here.
Are we having a technical difficulty?
No, we're just, no, we were just talking about microphones, forgive me.
Okay. Do you think they're able to hear okay?
They, it, we did, I stepped out in the hallway and did a check, they can hear just fine. You all could speak up just slightly, project just slightly more, otherwise, sound quality is great.
Okay, we can do that?
Yeah. Otherwise, sound good, thank you.
Alright.
Thank you.
And again, any feedback, if anybody's watching from the community or views this at a later date, feel free to provide us some feedback. I think that would be very helpful. Alright, Joe.
The good news is, they've never asked me to speak louder, so I, I think we'll be.
Yeah, this is unusual.
I've had, been asked either to be quiet or speak lower, but, but not speak louder. I wanna start with good news today, I think the superintendent sent the board an email, uh, we were awarded the animal processing. Yeah. That's, uh, that's been a lot of time, a lot of, a lot of effort, a lot of, I, I think we're five years into this.
Yeah.
Trying to make this happen and.
Two times a year.
And, and now it's gonna happen and we know it's gonna happen, and I think it's not ever gonna happen, I think we will have the absolute state of the art, top of the line. And, and I wanna thank the board, I know there was a, the push a couple months ago, whenever, well, time, time leaves, but, but I came to one board being absolutely scared to death that they, and I, I, it was good intentions, but I was scared to death, you're gonna make us go before we, before this day. And, and I wanna thank the board for hearing us out, for listening to us, for, for just considering all the options, and I do think it's gonna pay off, so, so, so thank the board and it's exciting. And really once it's all said and done with the money from the SBA, with our contribution, with our four hundred thousand that we set aside with COVID, we're gonna have a little over a million dollars uh, to put to this animal processing classroom. And it is exciting, it was, it was good to walk up to Mr. Cox today and tell him the news, the superintendent said, put me on speakerphone, I wanna hear, and, and I was able to pull Mr. Cox out of the meeting and, and shake his hand and say, hey, let's go, let's go to work. So there'll be a lot of work getting it done, uh, we'll, we'll keep the appropriate people involved, we'll keep a team involved, from our, from our office, it'd be the superintendent, Clay, myself, obviously we will have Mr. Puckman involved as the, uh, building level administrator, and then as our, our county expert in this area, uh, we will have Mr. Cox involved throughout the whole way, all the progress meetings, and, and he will have a say. So we'll keep the appropriate people involved, and what I would do with the board is just try to keep you updated, and it'd just be one of my agenda items as, as I get through and keep you updated on the progress. But that is exciting news, and that, that's been at the bottom of the list, but today it went to the top. So, uh, with the secure entry at Gilmore County High School, we're, we're well into it, uh, we've had about four workdays into that, uh, the tile floor is up, there's no floor right now, the tile ceiling is down, wires are everywhere, there have been new holes cut, there has been a wall taken down, there's been a new wall started up, so, so we're moving, moving right along into that process, and it's going well. Uh, you know, we are telling them we really, if at all possible, need that office, I'm not saying everything finished, because again, they have till September twelfth, uh, with their hundred and five days, but, but we really need that office up and running by the start of school, and I do think the contractor sending construction is well on board with that, and they understand that, and, and I think they're gonna work to that. Um, we have added a little to, to the scope of that project, and it's just the timing of things, uh, it was the project coming in a little on the budget, which is always a good thing, uh, when it comes in on the budget, but, uh, Gilmore County High School, there are a lot of things happening right now, if you walked up there, you'd think, what in the world are they doing? But the, uh, the, uh, science wing out there, where we have three classrooms out back, that hallway was just awful, and, and to be honest, the tile was literally coming up, our custodial staff, along with our maintenance staff, we've taken all that tile up. Uh, we had two classrooms to the left back there that we had re-tiled, but, uh, I don't know if we had some reaction, I don't know if there too much glue, with glue was seeping up through, and it looked, it was not, and I, I, in Gilmore County forever, I, I hate to mention this word, but mold, it looked like black mold on, on the ground, and it just looked bad. Uh, since we had the hallway taken up, we've taken those two classrooms up, so right now it's a cement floor, and we're waiting for tile. The vocational hallway, it is getting a makeup right now, Mr. Puckman's got custodial staff painting that hallway, we took up that floor, and that floor was coming up bad, so we've taken up that floor, and then the entire media center, uh, so, so a lot of things are happening outside even the secure entry, and, and, and everything right now is lining up well, it's working well, everybody knows the timeline, so, uh, just to kinda give you an update on that. Any questions on the secure entry at the high school, anything like that, any questions about that project?
I was around the front of the high school the other day and things look like they're going great, it's, I was really happy to see the progress.
Yeah. Yeah, good deal, good deal. The LED lighting, last time I spoke to you, I told you we, we need a walkthrough, uh, Clay and I were able to walk through with ESG, we're, it took a little bit longer than anticipated, but we walked in every, every room, looked at every light, walked under every light, every closet, every bathroom, and the day, we started at one in the afternoon and we only got through the board office and the high school, so two of those walkthroughs have taken place. We still need to get scheduled the elementary school, we did some, find some things, nothing major, some, a lot of bulbs turned, believe it or not, and, and I, I don't know if we walked in and just looked up and noticed, cause everything was so much brighter, we think, man, it's better, but, but a lot of just simple opened up and turned the bulb, they, and there's a certain way that bulb goes in there, and a lot of little things, uh, some busted, uh, when they took this cover off, of course, some of them, I can't tell how old they are, they busted a few, they owe us some of that, so a little bit of work on that punch list, but nothing major, nothing we can't, uh, get through and get through in a pretty quick manner, but, uh, but we still do need to walk through at the elementary school, so we've walked through two out of three on that. Any questions on the LED lighting? Um, with the HVAC, we're still in the waiting game, we were supposed to get two units delivered Friday, and we're, if you, if you go around back, if you're dropping off a student athlete right now, we do have student athletes going around back, uh, going in the gym at the back entry, cutting the construction up front, but, uh, you, you'll see soon, two units setting up our next student parking lot, uh, so two units are, are, should be delivered any time, so it was supposed to be delivered Friday, uh, but, but we're still just waiting on material, and I guess that's just where that area, where that is right now, and, and, I, I don't think it's ESG not pushing, it's not us not pushing, it's just waiting, uh, they've been in contact with the manufacturer, with everybody trying to speed that up, but we are just still playing a waiting game there. We're still playing a waiting game, I stood in front of the board, and it's supposed to be like second week of May, on the GPS ionization units that we would put on the existing units out at the elementary school, and, and we're still just waiting on that material to come in, it's just, it's just not came in. We've got a lot of things going our way right now, uh, that's one of the negatives, it's just not coming, you know, as quick as we'd like. Any questions on the HVAC? Update? With the storage building, I see it's later on in the agenda, uh, last board meeting with that, with that proposal, uh, with, with the budget, Clay had built in some money to take care of that, I don't wanna steal his thunder, but the storage building will be later on in the agenda out at the elementary school, uh, so, so I'll just wait for that. The last thing there was kind of a, a new item, uh, that I haven't been speaking about, but it's the mowing bid. Uh, we did rebid, we rebid for a nine month, we rebid a little bit late there, but we had some talk, discussion with the board, we rebid, it was, it was through nine months, which, which is June thirtieth, and then that bid would be up, or we could renew at the same cost, not a different cost. Uh, we did talk with the mower, with our contractor there, and I, I'm sure you guys can understand this, I understand, I didn't like it, but, uh, but he, he has told us he is gonna be unable, we, we wanted to extend, and we would have brought to the board to extend, but under current gas conditions and, and prices right now, uh, he cannot extend at the price we own right now, at the price we have it for. Uh, so later on in the agenda is permission to bid, we'd like to bid that out, uh, in fact, if the board votes for that permission, I'll be sending the advertisement out tomorrow morning, hoping we meet the timelines to bring it back to you the last board meeting in June and not have some gap in the mowing. Worst case, if we don't meet a timeline, or, or the board, for whatever reason, is not ready to vote that last board meeting in June, we will work with them on a week by week basis to contract the mowing out, so we don't go a period of time without our, without the, the mowing taking place. Uh, we have done that before and I, I hope you just trust me on that, we don't wanna go off that program. We don't, so, uh, so hopefully, I think, I think we'll see how the board votes tonight, again, I think we're just asking for permission, uh, to bid that out, and then obviously we bring back the bids to the board and ask for the board to approve a, a contractor there. And I don't think, I do wanna stress, I don't think it's the current contractor is not interested anymore, uh, I do think we'll see a rebid from them, I think it's just current, current, the current market, where we're at, it's gas prices and everything like that, and he just can't extend, uh, at the price he's in. That is all I have, be more than happy to answer any questions, uh, if anybody has any for me, a lot going on, but a lot of, a lot of good things with facilities, uh, just a lot of good, good, positive things with facilities happening.
On the meat shop, now, it's my understanding we already have the plan drawn up and all that, is that still right?
We do, uh, Greg Martin with Williamson Schreiber and I had a conversation this week, or late last week, uh, cause we knew today was decision day, we, we do wanna have a county level meeting
Are you still there?
Uh, of, of the people I mentioned earlier, we wanna make sure one hundred percent before we dive into this, that everybody's on board, everybody understands exactly what we're doing, what we're getting, so there will be a county level meeting, Williamson, Schreiber, our people to discuss it, but yes, most of it, and I just wanna leave it general like that, Dr. Miller, if you're okay with it, but most of it should be planned out and, and ready to move pretty quickly.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, you know? If, you know, if we could proceed with bidding in the near future.
I, I think you will see it in the near future, I hate to put a timeline on it, but yes, we will ask for that meeting soon, and as soon as we can, as soon as we can get the appropriate people together in the same room, make sure we're all on the same page, I, we want to move forward as quick as, as quick as possible. And, uh, I could bring you, next meeting, maybe I'll bring you a timeline of, of, you know, there are some things that are set in some, you know, you'll, you'll have to advertise two weeks, so whenever we start, we know we have two weeks to advertise it, then there has to be some other time, then we'll have a pre-bid meeting, or pre-construction meeting, a pre-bid meeting, that if you wanna bid on it, you have to be there, and there are certain timelines, and I could bring you a kind of generic timeline without actual dates until we, until we get it, if you'd like.
Yeah, I was just.
But we will move forward as quick as possible.
Yeah, I was just wondering, estimate.
And, and the same with the storage building, if, if that were to get approved tonight or whatever, we'd like to move, move forward as soon as possible with that as well.
We're on a roll.
That is, yes. Anybody else, any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Alright, just real quick, Brian, are you still on the phone? I think we lost him. I don't, it sounded almost like the call dropped.
Oh, yeah.
So.
She answered, maybe you said that.
Okay.
He has a touch, Joe.
Alright, so we will go ahead and move on to new business. Is this Clay or is this?
Yeah, permission to bid out the Gilmore County Elementary School.
Oh, Clay, just get your financial question.
Setting up, didn't you?
Yep. Yeah.
Alright, you have, should have had in your packet the, uh, preliminary cost estimate from Williamson Schreiber, uh, part of this tonight, uh, permission to bid, uh, would be us accepting, uh, their fees in the amount of seventeen thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars. With a total projected cost of two hundred and sixty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars, now that is a projected cost, uh, you see with the secure entry, we came in under, uh, that amount, it could be a little bit more than that, but that is their projected cost based upon their computer programming and all the stuff that they do to get those, uh, material costs and labor costs and all of that, uh.
So where is it on here? Try and find it.
Oh, the.
Yeah. Is that in?
You know, the interior personnel.
The, yeah.
Right here, yeah. In the, in the yellow.
Right.
The yellow is the actual building and maybe, uh, Joe, help me out if I mess up, we didn't wanna go into this, uh, we've been back and forth on this ever since it's been being talked about, um, as to what it should be, what it should look like, uh, we didn't want just to throw up just a out, outbuilding out there. This will be built, correct me if I'm wrong, with, if we ever needed to add another level or expand, we could.
One, one thing in our discussions that came up.
Sorry.
If, if we were ever to add on to that building, or had a need to, maybe a, a berth of three something, or something that we had to add on to that building, that is, where, where we want to put this storage building.
That's where it was.
Where it's most convenient for teachers and people to actually use it, is where we would add on to the building. So this is gonna be built in a way that if we ever did, I don't anticipate it, but who knows, who knows? I, I don't see us ever adding on to it, but if we do, this is gonna be in a build in a way, we can use this space for classrooms, if, if we had to, and that, that, that raised what little fear we had there in our discussions, that we didn't wanna put a storage building out where, where you, where you may have to add on, if you ever had the need to, to add on, so these are gonna be built in a way, now don't get me wrong, we're right back to square one with that storage building, if that ever happened, but these could be converted into classrooms, if, if we ever had to.
Is it thirty by?
I think it's.
Sixteen.
I think it's thirty-two by.
Three or something? I don't know, I'm gonna have to get Megan finds out.
That's pretty supportive.
That, that is.
Like thirty-two.
No, no, I mean, that's the ballpark on the dimensions that we discussed on site.
Yeah.
It's my understanding that what's shown there in the diagram in the yellow is the storage building itself, if we ever had to add on a classroom, what's in blue, that blue, that long piece of blue would be a hallway, and then that way it's all part of the building again.
You're not, you're not walking out of one building golden, another building on campus.
It would all be.
And that area was auto, that was an area that was designed basically for addition if necessary.
It ac, it actually was at one time, and one time it was, you know, the board, the CFP and all that, uh, to talk about moving to middle school out there, and that's where we were gonna add on those middle school classrooms. So, so that stairwell, that, that, that's right there, and all that was designed to add on if we ever had to.
Is, is it going to match the rest of the school, the materials, the outside?
Yes, and, and we actually discussed all this, like, outside of Williamson Schreiber, to avoid those fees, uh, maybe try and take it on ourselves, but that's when that discussion came into play pretty big, that's a fourteen billion dollar beautiful building, it's six years old.
Yeah, right.
And we didn't wanna go into it and, and, and nothing against it, but, but put a, a couple of stores, but if you don't build one big enough, and all of a sudden, we have five storage buildings out there outside, I believe as close as possible, Dr. Miller, it would match the school, I think it's one of the advantages of going through Williamson Schreiber and having them wa, walk us through this project.
It'll be aesthetically pleasing, hopefully.
Yes.
Yes.
It'll look like.
Yeah.
Looks like it should belong.
Right.
Yes.
Not like we went to, no offense against Lowe's, but.
Right.
Went and bought a building and then.
Right, that's correct.
And that's what I want people listening to, that when, I mean, we say storage building, and I know people automatically probably think, oh my gosh, that's expensive for a storage building, it's a storage area.
Right.
Yeah. But it's not makeshift, so.
No.
And we have specifics that we have to follow in order to build on, so.
Are there any, any other questions?
I think we're ready for a vote if nobody has any other question.
I'll make the motion to, go ahead and bid.
Second.
Alright, there's been a motion and a second to move forward with, to be able to bid out the GCES storage building, is there any additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Get to work, Joe.
Yes.
Yeah, there's another project.
I was gonna say. He's probably gonna be excited.
Did Brian vote?
Brian, yeah, he's on the phone, you still there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, did you vote, you voted yea or nay?
I voted yea.
You voted yea.
I'm looking to the world of people.
We like that. Okay. Um, so we will move on to the approval of the pre-K contract?
The approval of the pre-K contract is between Gilmore County Schools and Central West Virginia Community Action, Head Start, and this is something we do every year because we are in collaboration with Head Start, so it is just, uh, where we, um, they've worked with us collaboratively, and they provide services for students that are disadvantaged in our school system with the pre-K program.
How did you know, how many students this year that will affect approximately?
Approximately ten.
Ten. I'll make the motion to go ahead and approve this pre-K contract.
Second. There's been a motion and a second to approve the pre-K contract, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Brian, we'll assume that you're a yea unless you say nay. Hello?
I'm here, yes.
We can't see you shaking your head, buddy.
Yeah, that's in here.
Alright. Okay. Joe, your turn.
Yes. Again, just asking for permission, uh, because of the reasons I stated earlier with the mowing contract, to, to rebid and it start with advertising, uh, tomorrow, and getting the advertisement out, trying to meet that in the hopes of bringing it back to you, uh, at the end of the month, the meeting at the end of the month, with hopefully a recommendation of, of, uh, who will take over our mowing July one, but permission to bid it out and advertise.
I'd like to make a motion for, uh, bidding out the mowing.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any discussion? I just wanna add before we, we vote, um, we attempted before to try to have our local custodial staff take on the mowing for all of Gilmore County schools, and while they did a great job, it was too much work for them, um, it was way beyond the scope of what they could do in addition to the, just the maintenance that needs to be done in the school system, so, just want that to be taken into consideration, so. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright. Motion carries. Get to work, Joe.
We have no older unfinished business at this time. We have no older unfinished business at this time.
All right, we'll move on to personnel.
I'd like to separate them out if possible, since there was a question on the rest of the. Please.
Before we go into personnel, I'd like to make a motion based on West Virginia Code six nine eight four, to go into executive station to discuss personnel.
Second then, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
The post? All right. Brian? To carry you with us. Okay.
Yes, yes, yes.
You got what? Oh.
Oh, it's good. I think that's better than. We'll be out there in a couple of weeks. Brett Chapman back here. Uh, Lisa, can I get a few and get, uh? Oh, we can do it tonight, I was going to walk out here after I asked you that, because he knows I'm going to be back there. I'll be back there tomorrow or Thursday.
I will put you back out front with him.
I'd like to make a motion to come out of executive session.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second to come out of executive session, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now out of executive session at six fifty-four P M. Alright, so the, um, there was no action, well actually yes, there is action. Yeah, after we came in, so.
Under professional, I'd like to recommend Leah McIntyre Smith for special education teacher at Gilmore County High School. Jacob Persinger as special education teacher at Gilmore County High School. And Brandon King, director of student support services.
I'd like to do that, if you don't care.
That's what I was gonna do, yeah, professional. Is that what you're meaning?
Yeah.
Okay, yes, I was gonna do professional and then extracurricular, yeah.
Okay. Alright, so the, you've already made the recommendation for the three professional. Entertained a motion to approve the three professional recommenda- those recommended by the superintendent. I can't talk. Okay. There's been a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Nay?
Nay.
Nay.
Brian?
I'm not opposed, I was, I was, I was a yea.
Okay, he was a yea. She's second, no, I think, no, Brian. Brian seconded, sorry, I made the motion, Brian seconded, oh goodness gracious. Okay.
Okay, so, two nays and three yays?
Correct.
Excuse me?
God bless you. Alright, we'll move on to extracurricular.
Bless you.
There was including interviews from any Titan head girls, basketball coach. And then Leah McIntyre Smith for facilitator of gifted education for extended school year. As compensatory time where we did not have a certified gifted instructor for this year.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve Leah McIntyre Smith for facilitator of gifted education.
Oh, second.
Spent a first and a second to approve Leah, um, for that facilitator of gifted education. Is there any discussion? Those of, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
And then the next one is the rescinded rift, um, is there a motion to postpone clarification?
I'd like to make a motion to postpone for clarification.
Second. Till next meeting.
Yep. Alright, there's been a motion and a second to postpone the rift until the next board meeting for clarification. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the superintendent's information, the good thing was the animal classroom, animal processing classroom. So we get our, I'm super excited about that and get it going and.
AKA the meat shop.
Yeah, it's, no. It's an animal processing classroom. And we're super excited because I mean, we should have state of the art, um, with the money that we have available, so. That was, I, I wanted to do a cartwheel down but Paul Weybie, I can't do that anymore. So, I mean, it, it, we were excited to get that today and I think it's great for our students in Gilmore County. That, you know, we're gonna have the state of the art now, maybe people wanna travel to us, so.
Yeah, sure they will.
Super, super excited and I wanna thank the Owen play and everybody's been involved in it and it's not letting up the summer guys, so we're still. In destruction, that's a good thing, that's a good thing.
More fuel on the fire.
Yeah, it's a great thing, so I'm ve- very happy, very happy and thank you for your support and all this. It's been a long, five years and two times a year going after it, but we're excited.
Well, they got tired of us.
Yeah. Perseverance. We'll work, we'll work it down, one way or the other. So, yeah, that, that's what we have, so.
Alright, so do we have any board member comments?
I wanna make a comment about personnel in general. I, I think that, uh, we need to be more considerate of the personnel we hire. We need to look more at, if we have money to spend, we need to hire people that actually do the work. Like custodians and teachers and people like that, not administrators. We keep adding administrators, I think we're administratively heavy and that's just, that's just my opinion. I haven't talked about this with other board members, but I think we need to look at hiring people instead of adding people. We hired a person last year in the central office based on somebody retiring, a person never retired. Now we've got both jobs to pay, we're hiring another one based on the same thing. Got those two jobs to pay and I think it's time that we look at these personnel jobs and look at the workers. And if we need, our test scores and the way our performance are is not good. And the only way to improve that is hire and get good people that really matter. Teachers that want to improve the test scores and make sure that you have plenty to do the job. And, and, uh, not get overloaded in administration. Because I think mu- many counties, ours being one, are the same way, they're overloaded in administration. And there's some that are not and they're doing rather well, but I think we need to, uh, look at that in the next year and a half. And that's all I have.
Anyone else? I just wanna say, I'm so excited, I scared some residents today when I got that email about the, the classroom, the meat shop classroom. It's been a long four years as far as just trying to, you know, everybody, the people that just work so diligently.
Travel the road every.
Yeah, they're, it's just so exciting with all of the, all of the things that are now coming to fruition that, you know, four years ago, we thought possibly would never happen, so. Thank you guys for all your hard work on that, we really appreciate you, yes.
Yes.
At that point, if there's nothing else.
This is our first livestream, so we'll see.
It's our first livestream, yes, and again, feedback to people, if anything, let us know, good, bad, ugly.
Well, special thanks to Dr. Barr and, uh, what was your help works name?
Yes.
Oh, oh yeah, man, Seth Price and Josh Brennan, yes, yes, couldn't have done it without them, so I'm glad we were able to pull this off.
Yes, thank you.
I will then make a motion, motion away, to adjourn, a second. All those in favor? Brian already hung up, so I'm guessing he's.
He's an aye.